This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting for Tuesday, April 11th. This meeting is called to order. Always, always, always happy when we're able to start with Brighton Believers Award, so I'll turn it over to Dr. McGowan, who's already at the podium.
Thank you very much. We're so excited to continue this every meeting now tradition that Brighton Believes Council continues to award nominees, the Brighton Believers Award, for demonstrating the Brighton believes of integrity, the character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. The award winners are students, staff, teachers, community members, coaches, and the nomination form, of course, is available at bcst.org. We encourage people to nominate folks who deserve the recognition. We have three very deserving honorees this evening. I'd like to ask Dr. Rachel Lauber to come up first, along with Ella Hall and Dr. Hall. Dr. Rachel Lauber, the BHS springs teacher and orchestra director, was nominated by BHS student Ella Hall. She wrote, "Dr. Lauber puts a smile on so many people's faces while not only conducting BHS orchestras, but also anytime a student visits her. She is an amazingly talented, kind, respectful, and hardworking person who sets a great example for students. She gives so many enriching musical opportunities to many students, including those from other BHS musical ensembles. This year, Dr. Lauber helped plan musical performances in the hallways between periods before the winter break, which gave a great opportunity for music students to perform for their peers and spread some holiday cheer. Students are welcome in her room whenever they would like to practice or just need a quiet and less crowded space to focus. Dr. Lauber also gives opportunities for students to help plan concerts and aid with tasks around the orchestra room. This is great for students to learn leadership skills." Furthermore, Dr. Lauber is a continuous support for students. Whether someone is having a bad day, needs advice, or just needs someone to talk to, Dr. Lauber always welcomes them with warm arms and a sharp ear. The friendship that Dr. Lauber has created with myself and so many others is something that so many of us students will cherish, and I will be forever grateful for the incredible opportunities that have been granted to me and numerous other students. Congratulations, Dr. Lauber, for demonstrating the Brighton beliefs and being recognized this evening. And thank you all for taking the time to nominate your teacher. That's really awesome for being here tonight. Damien Laird, a BHS cleaner nominated by BHS science teacher Brad Allen. Brad's not here. Dr. Hall, thank you for joining us also. He wrote. He wrote, "Damien is one of the best cleaners that we have had over the last two decades. He is extremely hardworking and thorough. Every morning when I come in, the room looks expertly clean, which could not be easy to do in a science classroom. He will frequently go above and beyond to make sure that everything looks perfect. Additionally, he is unfailingly honest. Recently, I accidentally left my wallet in my classroom when I went home, and by the time I returned, Damien had taken the initiative to put it someplace safe and left me a note about where to find it. He is also personable and friendly, wishing everyone a nice evening as they leave with a smile on his face. I could not agree with that more. Always one of the most friendly people I ever run into in the entire district, Damien." Brighton is lucky to have Damien as part of our family, and for this and his demonstration of the Brighton beliefs, we've recognized Damien this evening. Another incredibly friendly and kind thoughtful person, Tom Luke. Can you come on up? I am talking about you, Tom. Come on up. And Assistant Principal Marin Jeffries can join us also. And John Novelli, if you could come on up also, please. Tom Luke, a custodial assistant at Council Rock, was nominated by Principal Matt Tapp and an Assistant Principal Marin Jeffries. They wrote, "There have been many changes at Council Rock over the years. One of the most positive and impactful was the addition of Tom Luke to our custodial staff 11 years ago. Though some may see on paper that Tom is a custodian, one may not know just how integral Tom is to our school community. Tom not only completes his tasks keeping our building sparkling throughout the day, but he also makes time for students. Tom greets children and helps escort them to their classrooms in the morning. For some students who were reluctant to come to school, knowing that they'd see Tom as they entered made all the difference. He dedicates time during lunch to sit and connect with students at their tables about what's important to them at the end of the day. Tom is present at dismissal to sit with children who are the last to be picked up. Students seek Tom out because they know he cares and he makes them feel seen. Students who may feel unsure or scared as the last to be picked up know that Tom will patiently wait with them, offering to play a game, color, or read a story while they wait. Tom is kind, respectful, responsible, and operates with integrity in all that he does. For these reasons and so many more, Tom is very deserving of the Brighton Believes Award." I don't think anywhere in your job description, all of those things, Damien, same with you, anywhere in your job description, yet you are always that kind, you are always that thoughtful. We know that belonging, a sense of belonging and connectedness for children is the key for them to be successful, and that can come from anybody in the building, and clearly for many kids, it's coming from you. Thank you so much, Tom. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. McGowan. As is the case for every public meeting, we provide the opportunity for public participation. Our process is to notify Dan over there, Dan Goldman in the corner, raise your hand, Dan, if you'd like to speak. Is there anyone here who would like to participate? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. You all have received the agenda for tonight's meeting. Motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
We also have the minutes from the March 28th Executive Budget Proposal and Budget Hearing. Any edits, changes, or comments in regards to those minutes? Motion to approve the minutes as received?
Some of.
Moved by Julene?
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
I'll abstain because I wasn't present.
Thank you. It's not really a public meeting unless we're talking about the budget in some way, shape, or form. So as we have a... No, John Novelli, you can stay for the budget presentation. We are going to do the budget presentation because we do have the very serious task tonight of approving the resolution of the adoption of the budget, and this is what we expect to be presented to the taxpayers. So, Dr. McGowan.
Thank you very much. I would also say, before I begin, I'm sure I'll finish with this. Thank you as a board for your guidance in the process, your financial leadership, but to Lou, our assistant superintendent, for his incredible work to put us in such a great position financially now, in the past, but also for the future, and for all the budget makers for their work on the budgets. Oh, it is much, much appreciated. You start out in the fall with key budget guidelines, and I've heard these over and over. This is an abbreviated presentation now. We gave the proposal last time, but for the budget adoption, we need to officially present this to you again and certainly note any changes that have been made, which we're not presenting any differences at this point. Should be noted also that the state has yet to pass the state budget. I was given some information earlier today that went on our list serve that it looks as though they'll be negotiating for about the next week or so. That does not give us pause, though. We feel very confident in the state aid numbers, but it's just a note for all of you that the state has yet to pass their budget that would provide those numbers. I don't believe there's any reason for us to be concerned. It's really nice to be able to say that in this budget year. I think they're just working through the final details of a pretty complex process. The budget guidelines were to prudently prepare for the continuity of high-impact programs, and this was with sustaining revenues because of the expiration of federal funds. That was a key priority for us in this process. Of course, supporting each of the blueprint priority areas as well. Thinking about the economic climate, the impact on people's household budgets, and how we could have an efficient plan and be as efficient as possible is a key for us. And to be looking at our long-term investment in facilities, which we'll preview for you tonight, again, capital project resolution, but also plan for the fall, to continue to think about the long-term investment in our facilities, and to comply with the property tax cap and understand its long-term impact on financial planning for the district. The priorities that we developed in the budget process based on the thought exchange feedback, our conversations with you, public D and Es and discussions, were to minimize the tax impact, of course. That's the highest priority always. In addition to making sure we have what we need to support student programs, particularly targeting those resources to student needs and staff support to meet those needs. Maintaining our fiscal stability and continuing to grow fiscal stability, we're in a very good position and have gotten to a very good position through a lot of significant effort over the last several years. We want to make sure we have that for the long-term future and that we're protected from any significant variable changes, and make sure we're supporting new and innovative programs along the way that we need. There's always a question of why not lower taxes, particularly when people see that state aid has been increased significantly. What's interesting about the increase in state aid is the fact that at the same time, we're looking at a drop-off in federal funds. We're looking also at an increase in our costs over time. We talked a lot about this last year with an 80% funding of foundation aid that went up from 60. Wow, it's in this grade. We're finally in a time where the aid is coming. Well, unfortunately, the expenses went up at exactly the same rate, and most of that aid increase was eaten up, and we're in that same position. The other concerns we have boil down to these answers to that question about not lowering taxes when there's more state aid. The state's committed to fully funding foundation aid. That's great for this coming year. We're at 100%. We have no idea in subsequent years where we will be. And can increases in subsequent years keep up with spending pressures? So, you know, many of the people in this room have been around this for a very long time. The state's economic forecast is really important to consider. It's actually somewhat surprising that our state's financial situation continues to be as positive and strong as it is because we usually suffer significantly when there's any kind of economic downturn, challenge, inflationary impacts. We're in a pretty good spot, and that's why the state's able to afford to give us the aid they are. But looking longer term and looking at trends over a period of time, and what we went through with the gap elimination adjustment and foundation aid troubles in the past, we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to prepare for an uncertain future. This is not doomsday, the sky is falling. It's just being thoughtful and prudent, knowing that at some point, aid will fluctuate again. We want to make sure we're not over-promising, under-delivering, or being over-committed. Full funding of foundation aid allows for the continuity of academic interventions and the mental health supports initiated since the pandemic. These are the federal programs, local programs, so federal money-supported programs that we need to put into the general fund. That is supported by foundation aid. So in other words, all of these things that are being paid for by federal money that's disappearing has to be paid for now by that foundation aid. So we still can't lower taxes because that's being utilized. And then maintaining the levy at the tax cap allows for a reduced reliance on fund balance and reserves as temporary funding sources. So we have increased over time to prevent cutting program, our use of fund balance and reserves. That's been a very healthy and thoughtful practice that you have supported so that we didn't have to cut program. We need to reduce our reliance on the savings account now that more revenue is coming in and have better balance in that sense. Reducing taxes now, in that moment, would have us still using our savings account to pay the bills, and that would be problematic, particularly because of the compounding effect of not raising the levy accordingly at what is still a relatively small amount because the cap is so low. But losing that revenue, you don't just lose the revenue for the year, you don't tax it. You use it in future years when the levy doesn't grow by that increment, and so that could be problematic and cause a longer-term gap between revenues and expenses. The preliminary budget, as we presented before, has not changed. It's an increase of $6.9 million, or up 7.45%. The total budgeted amount we're presenting is $100,091,697. Increases in salary and wages of 7.3%. We'll show you a breakdown of where those positions are. Employee benefits of 5%. The BOSI's budget up just over 10%. Supplies and services, 10 and 1/2. Debt and transfers, 7 and 1/2%. This particular chart shows our community the proportion of revenue increases to how much spending that would allow. In other words, looking at the subtotals, local sources up 22.1% overall. That includes the increase in foundation aid, refunds, recoveries, services to non-public schools that we get reimbursed for. That would allow for, that 22% increase in those revenues would allow for a total proportion of spending, 7.4%, which would seem then to fit the bill. Here's the problem. That's just the aid portion. What we need the tax levy to support is the, again, reduction of our reliance on fund balance. So if we take that fund balance revenue, that savings account revenue out, we're down 1.1% in spending we'd have to cut. We need to be able to replenish that to recuperate that revenue, and that's taken care of through the property tax levy, an increase of 1.8%, which is under the cap number, rounded up under the cap number, and 1.1% then of spending can be restored. No reductions necessary. Helps us keep that balance then between an overall 7.4% increase in revenues, affording us a 7.4% increase in spending. The foundation aid plan and accountability, which are required to report out by the federal government, specifically has to describe how the increases will be used, including portions of the increase to any of the seven areas that we are supposed to be utilizing the foundation aid increase for, and this is the state is requiring us to report on this. And that's increasing graduation rates, eliminating the achievement gap, reducing class sizes, providing support for students who are not meeting, at risk of not meeting state standards, addressing student emotional, social, emotional health, providing adequate resources to English language learners, students with disabilities, those experiencing homelessness, goals and ratios for pupil support, and detailed summaries of investments in current-year initiatives and balance funds support in priority areas, which is clearly directly in line with our spending plan and exactly where the resources are going. The unrestricted spending and how that's allocated is important to consider. The revenues are the top bar foundation aid, $5.9 million increase, and the tax levy is around a $1 million increase. That supports expenditure increases, contracts, wages, benefits, as described, financial planning, mental health interventions, tuition services, contract transportation, new positions to continue small class sizes and reduce those, and the other inflationary factors that are accounted for in the budget. The overall summary by object is important to point out as well, too. The increase in terms of the number of positions that I mentioned before. So when we mention the increase in wages of 7.3%, that's not because everybody's wage is going up that much, but the total spending in that area because of the number of budgeted positions. The total amount of salary wages budgeted last year was $39.6 million. This year it's $42.5 million, and then some. Last year's number of positions budgeted for was $652.37, and this year is $673.72. And the adopted versus the proposed budget variance would be a subtotal of 6.42%. All in all, an increase again of 7.45%. I think a moment ago I said 7.3. That's 7 and 1/2% that we presented. But where do they break down? And somebody might look at that and say, "Well, that's a lot of positions you're adding." Those are positions that are currently in place, many of them, but again, in the federal dollar. So we're bringing those over into the budget now, budgeting for them in the general fund, and they include teacher of the deaf, teacher visually impaired, class size adjustments, grades 1 through 5, three positions total for that, course electives at the high school, instructional leadership support at the K-5 level, seven academic interventionists, again, which were federal funds, and mental health supports, two total positions across the district as well. The property tax report card is the mandated formula used by the state, determining what each of these numbers are and then what our tax cap number is. The total budget amount, again, that we're presenting to taxpayers, 7.45% change or increase. The school year tax levy, 1.75%, and the consumer price index, which needs to also be indicated on the report card of 8%. The reserve balances on the right-hand side are important to point out as well. Our building reserves, current balance is $4.7 million. We're expecting that to go to $6.2. Tech reserve, $806,946, which would stay the same. The bus purchase reserve of $500,000 would also stay the same, as with the unemployment reserve of $650,000. The insurance or cyber, in particular, cyber attack and cyber challenge reserve, $782,606, would stay the same. The CVA insurance that has been budgeted for as well will go up from $5.15 million to $6.4. Tax tertiary account will stay at $803,688. Employee benefits will stay the same at $1.1 million. ERS will go from $5.6 to $6.1 million, and TRS from $2.2 to $2.7 million. And those balances would ultimately be by your designation at the end of the fiscal year. Important to point out to people also what we think are the points of pride, or the things that you are getting for the investment in your school district. And this is a piece of information that will be distributed to our school community and is available, of course, on the website. I won't read all the numbers at you, but really think it's important to point out to people that our graduation rate has never been higher, is the highest in our region, and is among the highest in the state. But more importantly, it is not for some kids, it is for all kids. And that wasn't always the case for us. Achievement is not for all children, which we think is the true measure of success. It means that all subgroups are performing at nearly that same level. 71% of our graduates also are leaving with advanced distinction. 74% took at least one AP course, and 85% of students plan to attend two- or four-year colleges. We're highly ranked by niche, again, locally number one in both Rochester and Upstate New York, National Blue Ribbon School, a school to watch, again, re-designated, and on and on and on, with many, many opportunities for kids in the area of athletics, music, et cetera. Many district awards and honors. At the end of the day, I look out at people in front of me, educators, and I think about the work that you do, Nicole. I think the work that's done at every one of our buildings. You know, Danielle and Tom are here tonight, too. It's not just about what happens at the high school or just about what happens at Council Rock. This is a K-12 effort to get kids to this point, and it has been for quite some time. The results absolutely show how the gaps have been closed for all kids, and that's what people are getting for their money. Great, great success. This is just an illustration of the proposed capital project. Remember that guideline that you set for us in terms of the investment in our facilities and the capital program, and demonstrates to you the overall local share, estimated net local share, that we would have in place for the '23, '24, '25 year of just over $1.2 million, and then that would flatten out to $400,000 for quite a long time before it would go net the other direction. So that car payment being built in, the investment being made, and then we would have a smaller local share. We are able to, right now, use the local share from reserves to pay for our capital project and really leverage those in the revenues coming in for Brookside to do quite a bit of work. So there's two phases we're talking about in terms of this investment. The first is May of this year. As part of the budget vote, we would also have a separate proposition. It would include the tech suite at the high school, the music area, the music suite, the middle school, family consumer science area as well, building system improvements, for a total of $19.5 million. So that's work in those areas that has to be done, including building condition items. But then in December, what we're doing is recommending that we use the proceeds from Brookside and leverage the allowable building aid to use, to construct a multi-season sports turf field and reconfigure the high school parking lot with the church property. So we've made, we think, a pretty strong case over the last several years, both in the sale of Brookside and the purchase of the church property, that that would allow us to reconfigure that space to create a much safer situation and more access for our community. It would really allow us to do that, and we're able to leverage those revenues to make that happen. It's a 100% reinvestment of the public property to a scope that we really think benefits our community. And an additional $10 million investment in building systems, modernization, gets us into that car payment territory again, and we're not having to take out of the general fund to do that. And the sports field is really key for us in terms of actually being able to use the space on the backfield and to create equity for all of our sports teams, both our men's and women's teams, all levels of teams to have access to fields at a much earlier stage in a place that doesn't have a lot of turf access, and given the weather conditions that we often experience, can't utilize those fields very well at all. It's also very difficult to maintain grass fields in a way that they can actually be used functionally, and so this would allow us to do quite a bit more. We would ask for a vote on that in December. Part of the reason for waiting until December is the environmental impact work that has to be done, and the timing of that can't happen. We can't conduct a vote on that until December, and so we need time to make sure that that can happen. So again, the 2023 Capital Improvement Project, $13.8 million is the subtotal of the construction budget, but with all costs included, $19.4 million. This is the second proposition. This is what we're talking about when I say second. Budget first, second this May, not second capital, but second proposition, and that's improvements of $4.9 million at the middle school, French Road, 1.9, Brighton High School, 6.6, and reauthorizing the use of funds that were previously approved by our community, the projects that couldn't be completed due to material and construction delays of $250,000. The detail of that, as I had mentioned, much of this, but did detail as much at French Road, redesigning the front vestibule, the exterior facade, signage replacement, a lot of cleanup work in that area to do, hallway ceiling flooring, lighting replacement, and heat pump replacement. I mentioned the other items at the middle school, but there's some door replacements as well, in addition to the family and consumer science car readers, elevator work, hallway work, and the ceiling floor abatement, and some stair safety modifications. At the high school, we'd like to be able to replace the greenhouse that in a previous capital project was lost, and we'd like to be able to re-implement that through the instructional program. And I mentioned the renovation of the tech and music areas as well. And then the site work at Brighton High School, $250,000 that has to be reauthorized also is included. We'd also be in a third proposition, asking the community to withdraw from the technology reserve. Important to point out that reserves are by community approval created. We also, though, and this is, we think, a very positive thing about our democratic process, have to ask the community for permission to take money out of the reserve, to use it this way. And so that's the reason for the proposition. This has no impact on the tax levy, although we realize all of the funds ultimately are coming from taxpayers, whether it's through aid or the levy. But this is not asking to spend more that will cost people more in tax money. In fact, I'd make the argument that using the reserve reduces the tax burden because we don't have to budget that in the general fund for these expenses. Generates BOSI's aid revenue also for future investment, and it's a variety of tech replacements, implementations, Aruba switch replacement, closet cabling upgrades, wireless upgrades, Promethium boards, wiring upgrades in this building, and core switch replacements, overall items that we would like to withdraw from the reserve and ask our taxpayers for permission to do. What's the overall impact? Is usually what people ask us. Fine, bottom line, that was great. I wasn't listening to any of it. Please just tell us the bottom line is. What are we all? It's really important to think about this in a couple different ways. And again, I've probably lost somebody who just wanted me to tell them what the bill was. But it is important to know about the equalization rate. Reason being, it will be confusing for people when they see that taxes go up differently for different homes in the district based on where they are assessed. So some of our homes are primarily assessed in Brighton and Pittsburgh, two different taxing jurisdictions, but also under the Brighton School umbrella, even though they are assessed by two different towns. The state has a formula or an equalization rate that they give us. It's not our rate so that it equalizes the burden between two different areas whose properties are taxed, or I'm sorry, assessed by two different assessors. That's not to say one person is wrong or not wrong. It's just the state's analysis of how close and how accurate the values in each town are to the full value. In other words, they have looked at, the state looks at the total properties in Brighton, and has determined that the property values that we are paying on, and our rate is being applied to, are 70% of full value. So they're 70% of the way there, but that the properties next year in Pittsburgh are 82% of the way there. This past year was 89% in Brighton, 82% in Pittsburgh. So pretty significant changes. When people are talking about how great it is the property values are going up, agreed, except realize what that also means is the state is saying, "Your values have gone up a lot faster than your assessments have." We're not encouraging any reassessment in town. I would just say, the formula from the state says, "We're 70% of the way there in Brighton, 82%," which accounts for a difference then, and the state sets this so there's an equalization.
Pittsburgh is 72%?
I'm sorry, 72%.
Thank you.
So 70%. Pittsburgh was 82% last year. So coming up next year, 70% and 72%. Thank you, Karen. Which means that the rate in Brighton per $1,000 of assessed value will be $27.53, and in Pittsburgh, $26.77. On a home value of $250,000, what that means is the taxes would go up in Brighton, $129, and they would actually go down in Pittsburgh, $639, the way those equalization rates work, and that fluctuation being that much different. Theirs going down, Pittsburgh, if you look at that, is going down 10%. Our equalization rate is going down 19%. I say "our" because I'm a Brighton taxpayer. The Brighton homes are going down 19%. There's a little bit of a slip there. There's a little bit of a slip there. The details that are available online for everybody to take a look at, property tax report card, the revenue summary, tax cap limit calculation, appropriation by function, historical summary of appropriation by function, appropriation by object, historical summary of appropriation by object as well, the three-part budget, and the detail by function, and the summary of staffing, all available for people to take a look at and ask any questions you'd like. We'd be happy to talk to you more about that and explain them in greater detail. The summary, again, total spending proposal, 100 million, 91,697 dollars, or 6.9 million dollar increase, up 7.45% in spending. Estimated tax levy increase, up 1 million dollars, or 1.75%, which is tax cap compliant. We believe this reflects our continued investment in blueprint priorities. They are mental health and wellness, academic excellence, student and family experience, staff support and collaborative culture, and safety, and planning for the future. We also think they recognize the priorities that have evolved through this budget process of minimizing the tax impact, ensuring that resources are targeted to student needs and staff support meeting their needs, maintaining our fiscal stability, and supporting new and innovative programs. On the ninth, we'll have a budget hearing. We don't expect there to be any changes, but we will also be able to, at that time, hopefully, report out to you that the state budget is passed and that those revenues are true to what was predicted. And then the budget vote, of course, is on May 16th. Here in this building, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Again, here in this building, we're no longer at the high school, we've been here now for some time. Vote here, 7 to 9 on the 16th. Can I answer any questions from the board?
Just a quick comment. We joke that we talk about budget at virtually every meeting, trying to understand how to become more efficient, try to be as efficient as possible with our community's dollars. Board service is a lot about making sure the dollars are well accounted for. I will speak for the board and say our thanks to you, Lou, Dahlia, the entire teams who are always trying to figure out ways to not spend money, but putting a primary focus on making sure kids are doing the very best they can possibly do. So a ton of work goes into this, a ton of work behind the scenes. We talk about it all the time. I don't mean to make light of it. It's very important. It's one of our primary responsibilities to make sure our community knows their dollars are being well spent. So appreciate the presentation. Anything from the rest of the board? Comments, questions? I will, I apologize to all of you because I missed this. I'm going to put forward a motion to change item seven. It currently reads, "Approval of Resolution of the Adoption of the 2022-2023 Budget", and that needs to be changed to "Approval of Resolution of the Adoption of the 2023- 2024 Budget and Property Tax Report Card." So my apologies for that. Motion to approve that change to item number seven.
So moved.
Moved by Julianne?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any, I'm going to ask one more time, are there any questions on the budget detail that Dr. McGowan provided?
No.
Okay. So the changed item number seven, which is approval of the resolution for the adoption of the 2023-2024 budget and property tax report card, motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Esther.
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are approved.
Just want to thank Lou again for his leadership in this area.
Absolutely.
Great job.
Okay, on to reports. You all have received the reports, I'm sorry, under the first section, financial reports. You've had a chance to review both the treasurer's report as well as the financial summaries. Are there any questions on either of those financial reports? Motion to approve those reports as received.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Our student Eliza, our student representative, Eliza, is not able to be here, but Christina will stand in for her and give some of the summaries of what Eliza provided us.
Okay, so Eliza says that the third quarter is almost coming to an end this Friday, April 14th, so students are scrambling to make up missed assignments and tests. With only one quarter remaining, we are putting our efforts in to raise our grades and honor Brighton. Regarding clubs, Health Occupational Students of America is a club that was founded this year, and members participated in the state competition where founder and our student rep, Eliza Gauss, won second place in the state for medical law and ethics and will now compete at the national level. Along with this mock trial, will compete in regionals for the first time next Friday, so good luck to them. Elections for executive council will happen on Wednesday, and all of our documents, including speeches, petitions, and agreements must be submitted by tomorrow. Tomorrow is Wednesday. Afterwards, the new and old executive council will start planning for the most awaited event of the year, Spring Fest. Club members sell items for the club's fund, there's a faculty talent show, and spring sports come out in celebration. The informational meeting for student council elections will take place on Tuesday, April 18th, after the executive council elections. And I guess that's it.
Great.
Lots of fun.
Thank you, Eliza. And thank you, Christina.
Yes.
Next up is the Board of Education, Monroe County School Board Association Committees. First is Labor Relations. I was at the Labor Relations Committee meeting on March 22nd. It was updates regarding the Rochester area's school health plans. I will quickly note, in a country, in a world that is continuing to focus on mental health, there was a rather robust discussion around compensating and co-pays for mental health support. There are a number of different types of licensed providers, and some of the health plans provide co-pays and some do not, depending on the degree of licensing and things like that. So it's an area that remains in focus. So whether it's a mental health counselor who doesn't have a specific degree or somebody else, there will continue to be a lot of work in regards to how do we make sure we're helping people and encouraging people to get mental health support. It's a good discussion. Information exchange.
So that was Julianne and myself. We went together this time, and it was held on March 15th, and the topic was about the use of the Parents' Square app. So it was about stakeholder engagement in your school district. And the two people who were speaking came from Fairport. They had their Director of Technology Operations and their Superintendent to discuss the use of Parents' Square. So it seems like some of the districts in Monroe County are already utilizing Parents' Square to different degrees, so we're right there using it as well. And they highlighted some of the features of it. It can do even more than I think that, I think we've just like brushed the surface of what it can do. Some of the highlights of why it's a good app and people enjoy it is that it's multilingual. You're able to translate into multi-different languages, and transportation systems can use it as well. And you can track buses in real time. Anything to add?
Oh, no.
Thank you both. Legislative?
Legislative meets tomorrow, which is a change for this month because of the April break. We usually meet the first Wednesday of the month. It will be an interesting meeting. Regent Wade Norwood and Regent Adrian Hale, who is our newest regent, will be with us tomorrow, speaking at large to the group. So are you going tomorrow?
Yep.
Let me attend this, too.
Great. Mark Okonovich, former Brighton Board President, is now on the BOSI's Board. We are grateful for his representation, provided a brief report. The Monroe One BOSI's Annual Meeting is Thursday, April 13th, which is two days from now, at 5:00 PM, and all component board members and superintendents are invited and welcome to attend. They expect to approve their 2023-2024 Monroe One BOSI's Administrative Budget, along with approval of three board candidates nominated for election. There'll be a regular board meeting after those votes. And the capital projects are continuing at their main building on the Fairport campus. And as mentioned before, we thank Mark for his involvement on behalf of our community. Other board member reports, I always make Eleanor start, so I'll start and we'll go this way. Continuing on the construction, I work on the construction committee with Lou and our great, great, great buildings folks. It goes without saying that there's a ton of work going on in the buildings, and by "ton of work," I mean work underway, work being inspected, work being planned for, and work being designed, so in all phases of how something gets done. Dr. McGowan alluded to it. It will be a long process to figure out how to make the entrance to the high school more safe, and there's a concern about the light already that's down by the creek and whether we could actually add another light. And it will absolutely involve the state DOT, which means that process will not be straightforward and it will not be quick. So all of that work takes time, and the state ed reviews for all projects, as it should be for governance reasons, takes a long time. So we're working on things that we would like to start in '24 and in some cases, '25 now, to get through some of those review cycles. So a lot going on there, and between Dr. McGowan and Lou, you'll get, continue to get updates on where we are in the various phases of projects. Christina?
The Teacher Policy Board meets next week, so we'll be approving the grant for the 23-24 year, and also talking about supporting new teachers. And we also have a DEI, the New York State School Board Association, DEI Committee has a summer retreat, so we're working on that. We met in person once last year in three years, and we'll do it again next year.
French Road had their building equity team meeting on March 16th, where the topic was continuing to work on the visionary planning that was started last month with the plan to bring the exercise back to all the staff at French Road to engage all building stakeholders.
Agreed.
Last month, I met with the school-based equity team at 12 Corners, where we worked to design an activity for students to share more information about culture and climate in the building. And it was just a really interesting opportunity to work with some of the students on the group, to work with one of our experts at RE Center, and I'm really looking forward to hearing what the students have to say about their everyday experiences in the building. And I also met with the Monroe County School Board Association Steering Committee to set the budget for next year that will go to their executive committee next. And it's just an opportunity, too, for me to recognize as a school board member what value we get from the Monroe County School Board Association and their training and activities that really helps center, for me especially, what it is I need to do as a board member and what my responsibilities are. So I'm glad that we have a strong relationship with that organization.
Thank you. Esther?
The Hiring Practices Committee met on the 7th of March. We continued our discussion of recruitment and retention of faculty and staff of color, and we also continued our discussion of the hiring of a Hiring Practices Liaison and what those responsibilities would be for that particular position. Curriculum Council met on the 9th, and we had the opportunity to look and evaluate actual potential graphic designs for the profile of a BCSD graduate and all of the seven traits that we adopted, which are fluctuating. But right now, we are focusing on the seven traits, advocate, critical thinker, curious, joyful, collaborator, resilient, and empathetic. And we do various layouts of how these, what it would look in a graphic, graphic format. And it was interesting to hear the feedback from people on how one graphic would be received very differently from person to person. And the School Equity Base Committee for the high school met on the 16th, and we are continuing our discussion and our distribution of the second Climate Culture Anonymous survey that's going to be sent to all grade levels from, grade levels from ninth through 12th grade. And we're looking to distribute that between April 12th and the 21st, and we will begin to review the data on all that in May.
Great. Thank you. Eleanor?
The school-based equity team for Council Rock met on the 16th of March and had a discussion, really kind of reconnecting as a committee, as not all of us had been there in a while. And then we had a sort of a recheck on community norms, and that kind of took up, there were some other items that were on the agenda, but really just kind of checking in and talking about celebration of holidays and what this means at sort of the elementary school level, and how we can be more inclusive, and also just kind of talking about them. And it was a really great discussion and kind of just reflective, and Matt Tappin had a really great discussion on that. And then the Security and Safety Committee is meeting next week.
Wonderful. Thank you. Two quick notes. First, both Dr. Gasparino and I were on search committees for administrative positions. Dr. Gasparino, French Road, myself, in the middle school, and Dr. McGowan, you can hit that briefly if you want, in your superintendent update. Both Sue and I were glad to be part of those teams, met some really great people, really thoughtful questions, and some really great campaigns, thankful for that. I also have done this in a long time. Christina is the one who helps us coordinate amongst 25-plus different subcommittees, who's on what, and keeps us all organized. So I want to thank her for handling that. As we all know, the work of a board member isn't every other Tuesday night, there's a whole bunch of subcommittees, panel discussions, and group initiatives. So thank you to you for coordinating all of that for us, greatly appreciated. And with that, we'll turn to Nicole.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, as always, for letting me share some of the great things going on in the building. So at Council Rock, so hopefully you've had the chance to look through the report, click on all the links. Mrs. Gornot participated in an international music exchange with students in Poland, and they automatically, the students in Poland automatically learn English as their second language, so they wanted to share what they had learned, so they sent a song. And then the Council Rock students, Mrs. Pappas's second grade class, sang "One Small Voice", which if you've ever heard Council Rock students sing it, it's amazing. And they sent that back, so you can click on that link of the globe to see the students performing. It's really beautiful. And they want to continue to have that Music Without Borders exchange ongoing. In Ms. Nickerbacher's first grade class, two parents came in and some of their colleagues, and they taught them about how bones grow, how to keep bones healthy, what happens when someone breaks a bone. And Ms. Nickerbacher actually had a cast put on her leg and then taken off her leg, so that's a lot of fun. They looked at models of bones and the tools that doctors use, and even different kinds of bone breaks, so lots of fun. At Fresz, in extended studies, third graders made planets as part of their units on space. Fourth graders made their own advertisements for their time travel machines with Mrs. Fallon and the Rakerspace Room, and I just loved, it's kind of representative of what's going on here right now, people in front of the camera, people behind the camera, people writing. It was, it's just beautiful pictures, the pictures are the best. Fifth graders, this is still in extended studies, are working together to create new cultures, and they are working towards a common goal, but trying to create a unique and culturally rich community. So what they're doing is working together to create their own. And then, Mrs. Harp's technology class have real algae that they received, and they are working on oxygen and how algae is a food ingredient. They made a virtual town and a survival game, which sounds like a lot of fun, with the interactions between that, so awesome things happening with tech. We had several French Road students who were selected for Monroe County Band and Orchestra. One student who was with the band, and then two who were selected with the orchestra. So that's, that's a pretty amazing contribution to all how awesome our music program is and our ongoing awards for being a noted school for music. And if you go to the next page, the Red and Blue Band from Fresz went to 12 Corners to play with the seventh and eighth grade bands. And it's great because they're going to be making that transition soon, and then they were able to see what it's like to play at the middle school.
That is a ton of kids, that is a ton of kids playing instruments.
Oh, my gosh, right? And then Mrs. DeShiel's class, I would love to go into this classroom for this experience. They had a camping in the mountain days to, as the cumulative for their research projects about the Appalachian Mountains, Andes, Himalayas, or Alps, and talk about why these are extreme environments. So they turned their classroom into the mountains, and you can see just some wonderful experiences they're having together. Really nice. 12 Corners, the French students, grade six through 12, had a concert at the high school. Etienne performed, and they went through grammar and vocabulary. They rocked it. It's on the YouTube channel, the district YouTube channel, if you'd like to watch it. The eighth grade French students, because they've had French for the last three years, they went to Quebec in the beginning of March, and they went to a UNESCO World, it is a, there is a UNESCO World Heritage City as part of Quebec. They went to a military training. They visited a sugar shack and then learned about maple history and then some awesome snow tubing, so you can see a lot of those photographs of what a great time they're having. Definitely the sugar shack, and some nice yummy treats. I had to include all the Definitely the sugar shack and some nice yummy treats. I had to include all those yummy foods.
Ice hotel, too.
Yeah. At the high school, lots of things happening, happening with the counseling department. They have been planning for 23-24 school year, course recommendations, counselors met individually with each of their students to help them select their courses. There are juniors who are participating in college search. Some went to the National College Fair in March. Some students went to DC to go tour the historically black colleges and universities, and then there is a trip coming up for SUNY schools. They are also, have also, had their last family night, their junior family night, where they're just talking about post-high school planning process, and this was the last of the six parent family presentations. Spring is busy there. Business education, we had a virtual enterprise award, so four students attended a trade fair, and to receive their business plan award, their company was called Sucker Punch Suites. They had to develop an executive summary, take part in two different presentations, and they came in third place out of 300 schools.
Great.
So awesome sauce. And then, of course, mock trial, which I know has been mentioned a few times. So this was from before they went to their competition on the 29th. They actually won on the 29th, and they are going to the next pages that they won, and they are going to regionals in Jamestown the weekend of April 21st, and I believe it's the furthest they've ever gone. So that's pretty exciting. And that is it. And thank you for letting me present. I always say to the teachers at our faculty meetings, you know, please just send me more, send me more, because this is just a tiny little size, tiniest little fraction of what's happening in the building.
I want to make sure you take this the right way. We love the pictures. Words are great, but the pictures are even better.
I know. The pictures are awesome.
Pictures, yeah.
They're the best because you see it's just joy and happiness.
And it's really interesting. It's really interesting, too. Thank you very much.
Sure, you bet.
Peter?
I don't have pictures.
No, the PTSA is continuing the great work that was due, and more to come. Great. Thank you very much.
Well, Dr. McGowan? A few quick items I just want to mention to people. We have had some administrative openings, as you mentioned, and a process, thoughtful process in both, and Sean Brooks was added as an assistant principal of the middle school. Very excited to welcome Sean to the team beginning July 1. And also tomorrow, we'll have final interviews for 12, sorry, French Road Principalship, and we'll keep the community posted and expect an announcement soon for that. But feel great about the candidates, about the process and the work that people have done to put the right people with our kids as well. Excited about that. Swatting is an issue that so many people are encountering in so many places. We were, as many people know in our community, the victim of a false threat back now, a couple weeks ago before the break, and I would just, one, commend our safety team and our school leaders and school staff for doing everything the right way, doing it well, doing it thoughtfully to keep people safe, to communicate clearly. Really proud of that work, yet still very frustrated that people are in a position of being frankly terrorized in that way, and it's traumatic. It's terribly sad, and I know that we're having lots of conversations with legislators. Senator Schumer held a press conference over the break in Brockport, really promising to work towards additional funding for the FBI, to do more to prevent and to track these particular issues, and we certainly support that as well. And we hope that everybody had a great break and those celebrating holidays, celebrated, continuing to celebrate holidays, have peaceful and special times with our family and friends. Thanks.
The swatting situation was a tough situation. Our thanks on behalf of the board, to the entire team for everything you had to go through. Also ask parents to continue to be mindful of any of their students' social media activity because that can present a challenge as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next up is item nine, resolution of the Monroe One BOSI's annual election and budget vote is what I referred to in Mr. Kokonovich's update. Lou is involved in that management services committee and plays a role in the budget development, so we can be confident in the numbers that are being developed. Any questions with regard to that budget? Motion to approve the Monroe One BOSI's annual budget.
So moved.
Moved by Julianne?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have an approval of an independent hearing officer for a due process hearing. This is a required action for us with regard to an ongoing dispute with the family and the CSE process. Motion to approve the independent hearing officer.
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have the consent agenda. You all have received the personnel changes, the recommendations from the Committee on Special Education and the recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Education. Any questions with regards to those three documents? Motion to approve those three documents?
So moved.
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
We also have, as always, fundraising activities, Friends of the Arts in Brighton, concessions at the VHS lobby on April 28th, and we have a field trip for speech and debate state competition, April 28th to 30, 2023. I did those reports separately by mistake. I apologize. So I'll also ask for approval of the fundraising activities and the field trips.
So moved.
Okay. Last up before we adjourn, our thanks as always to Bill Violet, who's our student behind the camera tonight, but also a special thanks to Mike in the back room because it's his birthday today. Happy birthday!
Happy birthday!
Have a great day. Anything else, as they say, for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.